I'd like to welcome you to the July 30th, 2018 meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I would like to call this meeting order. Would you please rise with me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plard?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Prokam, Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Campana?
Here.
We have the agenda in front of us. We need a motion to approve it. Commissioner Smith?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one addition by moving item 3K, the Audit Contract for Fiscal Years 2018 through 2020, to New Business. Item 10. Moving 3K to item 10.
Okay, we will move that item. It'll become item number 10 under New Business. Now, would someone care to approve the agenda as amended? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the agenda be approved as amended.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
A second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries 7-0. We come to announcements. I have just one item. Scrap tire pickup. City of Marquette received a grant for scrap tire cleanup program grant from the MDEQ. It will be Wednesday, August 1st, from 3:00 to 7:00 at the Flink Farm site, which is the new site, south on McClellan. The address is 1415 Pioneer. In other words, you come in on Pioneer and come out on McClellan. Normal-sized tires. This is your opportunity to get them out of your garage, bedroom, wherever you store them. If you need more information, go to the website, the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, or call the City of Marquette Public Works. But again, that date is August 1st, from 3:00 to 7:00. In the past, this has been a really good program. Gets the tires out of the woods, gets the tires out of your backyard. Otherwise, there's nowhere to put them. So, take advantage of this while we have it. Next, we come to public comment. Public comment is that time when residents, citizens can address the commission on anything that they care to talk about. It's also a time where people could reserve time to speak on one of our new business items coming up on the agenda. So, I'm going to open public comment. If anyone wishes to address us, we need your name and home address. You've got three minutes. You are first.
Steve Davis, 523 East Ohio Street. I'd like to reserve some time for New Business, for the agenda for the Heartland Sale of property parcel 35, and then 9 through 11 and 12.
James Gallant, 538 Yalmer Road, Scandia, and I represent the Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And I've been hearing lately about the death of John Kivula and the Legacy Fund that's being started in Lansing, and we have some legislation going for suicide prevention training in the schools, be mandated. And, but, I've started on a little mission of my own to get municipalities and public agencies to make personnel policies that if your employees were to witness someone attempting suicide, that they would be required to get them help. Because that didn't happen for John Kivula. They said, it was reported in the news, that he, right there, on the side of the road with law enforcement, had to be restrained from attempting suicide right there on the highway. And that they said they didn't, apparently didn't have any cause to him on a mental health hold. And, well, that would seem like the best reasons right there, is if that happened. And so, we think that the city, the public employees would be required to do that, and you please consider doing that. And, please consider requesting a report from your health officer, Fred, or not Fred, but Jerry Messina at the Health Department. He is the city health officer also, according to state law, and Duke Lake Point Hospital CEO. Their efforts for suicide prevention plan for Marquette County, it was Duke Lake Point Hospital presented a plan to the Marquette County Board in 2013. Don't know what happened to it. Never really did get around to having a plan. We don't have a plan now, and they're just kind of, don't really know. They're going and, they didn't really come up with a plan, no. And, but, there was a resolution by the county board. I would ask you to please request that resolution, and there's a report from the county administrator, Scott Urbish, and Sarah Dernan from the Health Department. She's the one that facilitates this Suicide Prevention Alliance in Marquette County, which is led by the Health Department and Duke Lake Point Hospital, and Great Lakes Recovery Center, and Pathways Community Mental Health. All the people are supposed to be doing that. Except, when they gave some of the minutes, there was like a year and a half worth of minutes of the meetings, and they never spoke of the design and implementation of a suicide prevention plan. So, it's like they're not really doing the work that they were charged to do by the county. And I believe that you have a member of the Suicide Prevention Alliance on that, in the Police Department, and has been participating for several years now. And I believe it's Mr. Kohler. And, could we just get a report, see where we're at on all this? Because the city, we have in common, we have a health officer. County of Marquette, I'm in Scandia, you're in the city, that is your health officer. And that is the best interest of our community, to have a plan, and to move forward on what's, in real time, what's happening in the community to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Walt Anderson, 430 North Lake Shore Boulevard, Marquette. I would like to talk about Hartwood Forest for a few minutes. Myself, I sat on the Hartwood Forest Advisory Committee several years ago, and the fact is, is that we had a very diverse group of people on that committee, and we spent over a year looking at that property. We thoroughly looked physically at all of that property, including flying over it in a helicopter, and we walked it in many areas. The fact is, is that parcel that you're looking to sell was the designated parcel to sell that that committee picked out with the help of all of the different aspects or groups that were interested in that property for recreational purposes. The fact is, is that piece is closest to the infrastructure, to the highway for ease of access. And the fact is, that parcel of land is a burden to the City of Marquette taxpayers. Millions of dollars were spent on that property. And the fact is, is we should have sold that piece a long time ago, but there obviously wasn't a good quality prospective buyer until now. So, with that being said, the time is now to sell it, and it needs to be sold because we still have a heavy debt load to pay on that property. And that's falling on the city taxpayers of Marquette. Granted, people like the trailhead where it's at, but bikes are mobile, vehicles are mobile, they can park in a bunch of different places. Maybe there should be multiple trailheads in Sands Township, in Marquette Township, in Chocley Township, wherever the Hartwood Forest is, because it is in all of those townships. And I'm sure there's still places in Marquette City that could be used as a trailhead, but I'm thinking you need multiple trailheads instead of just one, so people can take the pressure off of that land as far as a main point of starting from and returning to. With that being said, I hope you do decide as a city commission to sell that piece of parcel, or that piece of property tonight, as a parcel, so it can be developed into something quality that would return tax revenue to the City of Marquette. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave. Two parts to tonight. I first came up here to, I guess, last time I came up here, three weeks ago, I was questioned whether or not I knew how the city worked and operated. At this point, I am up for an election against two potential re-elected city commissioners. I'd like to point out that I'm not against selling this property. I just wish we sold it to the No Cayman on Trail Network, or at least allowed them, because this RFQ process that you won't hear the proposals if you don't make it through the RFQ, that restricts a lot of potential development. The actual development that is being proposed for parcel 35, by the way, side note, where is parcel 9 through 12? Your maps don't really have labels on them, and there's no real definition from the purchasing group, Verida, to provide where this element is that they want to purchase. Now, when you say I haven't followed along, I do follow along, and there's a lot of trails I ride up there, and I'm just wondering which ones are they? Are they ones all the way up to Morgan Creek? Are they ones going all the way up to the old Flink Farm, or whatever the hell that means? Or are they going down to the Carp River? I'm really curious about that. At the same time, the development that is being proposed for parcel 35 at the foot of the Marquette Mountain Trail, or Marquette Mountain Road, Mount Marquette Road, at Marquette Mountain Base, is just an extension of a footprint of an existing place. It's been open less than a year. No Cayman on Trail Network has the exact same plan out at their Forestville Trailhead. They could easily utilize their plan at Forestville Trailhead to operate this property down here next to their trailhead, and provide a buffer between the trailhead parking lot and the Rippling River Resort. Kern and Company has multiple facilities. They've put this in their purchase agreement. They have no problem making money off of what we've already allowed them to buy and purchase and develop. The No Cayman on Trail Network is a group of dedicated volunteers who made this trail setup on parcel 35 from the get-go. 14 years ago, when you sold that, or bought that property, they were the first ones to come in and say, hey, we can make this road. We can haul, physically, manually haul, because I helped them out, the trail-making equipment all along that whole setup. And you're telling them now, tonight, that they don't have enough money to purchase it. And you're telling them tonight that all of their effort is now going to be given to a company that is very successful. Don't get me wrong. Kern and Company, you do your thing and make it Rippling River Resort. I would love to see you go on the other side by the parking lot at Marquette Mountain. But that's not what you're asking today. I'm asking you, as a city commissioners, to, one, deny the sale for 9 through 12, because we don't really know exactly what they want to do with it, and, two, deny the sale for 35, because there's an alternative that's very profitable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Hannah, 2838 Granite Point Drive. You've heard me before. And in all honesty, I had not expected to speak tonight. I was sort of resigned and accepting to what's going to happen. But I do want to object to what a previous speaker said about the, well, I respect the time and dedication of the ad hoc committee. It is clear, all through the report of that ad hoc committee, that there would be a public process. And when I spoke about this at the June meeting, you all answered me and said, this RFQ is the beginning of the public process. And here we are, it's a month and a half later, there's no public process, with due respect to the, I don't speak for the NTN. I'm not the NTN, I'm Gail Hannah. And I was not part of a public process, so I'm not objecting to what you're doing, but I would second the previous speaker in saying, I think the NTN has earned the right, with their sweat and their tears and their shovels, to own the land that they sit on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank Jeff Verido, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on items four and five. These are my opinions. July 9th, Mr. Schlegel mentioned newly planted beach grass at McCarty's Cove. Despite past reminders, there lack signs behind the south lifeguard stands to direct users to the correct paths. Signs need to be centered on the paths, or people will walk right by. The time spent planting is then wasted. Using small piles of clean debris was also recommended to block unneeded paths. Of course, this won't occur if the manager doesn't jot down these concerns that are within his purview. July 9th, the manager was unaware that Mr. Stonehouse was addressing him because he was chatting with the attorney. Then the manager spoke to Ms. Smith, also during commission discourse, which takes her attention away from what she's supposed to be hearing. Too many managerial items mentioned here aren't being addressed, such as the needless fence, two lights, and cement footings that still stand at the northwest corner of Lighthouse Park. Except for the south view, the property isn't practical to use. We're nearing the end of summer already. This board continues to take advantage of years of people's patience. Last month, a small slide occurred on the bluff just east of the birdhouses. Of course, this didn't alert any of our members to the need for slopes ordinances, which remains unfinished item to this day. Our new members aren't aware of my 16-year effort to establish ordinances, and the rest care less. Such items begin at the planning commission level, so hopefully Mr. Schlegel will see the importance, as I've tried to convey to this board for 16 years. What follows is the most prime example we'll ever see of a present commission being blamed for sins of the past. Fresh, very severe bluff cutting occurred above the heart of Lower Harbor Park. Because it's tough to discern which Rid Street address corresponds with the destruction below, it should be known the responsible address is 340 East Rid Street, where ugly logs and construction equipment are evident. An old growth tree was pulled from the bluff to its death from below. Five people cheered, including the property owner and his father, as it suggests, "I can destroy a tree that's twice my age. I'm a real hunk of man." As is the case with fireworks, there was no law on the books to protect us from imminent damages, in part because this board is among the least proactive bodies in the history of mankind. For Mr. Frazier's benefit, my view isn't impacted negatively. This comment is recorded based on the despicable appearance of that bluff from below, with all that exposed ground, and the loss of yet more of our priceless wooded bluff. This property enjoyed the finest view along the entire bluff top, as I experienced myself during an estate sale at that very house. I'd have traded in my view in a heartbeat for the love of that awesome bluff. This was the healthiest, most aesthetic section, a loss to us all, so a guy can have a view. It's reminiscent of the needless destruction to South Beach Park, the same third-world mentality.
Good evening. You're in Malankin and 8 Market Drive, here in the City of Marquette. I have to concur with Mr. Anderson. The property should be sold. The people that's been using it for bike paths have been trespassing all these years. They're violating the ordinances, current laws, and everything else. They've been using it without any ramifications from the public itself, but it doesn't give them a right to own the property after 12, 13, 14 years. It gives the property the right to be sold as you see fit, and that's what you're about to do. And Mr. Kern has a plan to put it in usage, and I concur that you need to, if it fits in your plan, you need to sell it to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Nina Van Enden, and I live at 3032 Island Beach Road. And speaking to the Hartwood Forest, I actually disagree with Mr. Anderson and Mr. Lakinen. I feel that the NTN should be given the opportunity, and, fine, if we need to sell it, if we need the revenue, that's fine. Okay, I agree with that. But let's give the NTN also the choice to purchase it, and also allow for due process, as another previous speaker talked about as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the commission? See, now we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to the presentation for tonight. We have one presentation, which is the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee. We have Mr. Walt Anderson to my right.
Excuse me. Walt Anderson, 430 North Lake Shore Boulevard, Marquette. I happen to be the Chair of the Traffic and Parking Committee. This is our report for tonight. The purpose and goals, okay, established June 13th, 1978, by the commission. The mission, updated October 14th, 2014, to include complete streets, and represent the residents and the businesses of Marquette. And we conduct 12 meetings per year. The members are myself, Terry Alders, Bill Arsh, Tim Tebby, new member this year, Dan Hackola, new member, and Al Sherbino, new member. We happen to have a vacancy, but as I understand it, it's no longer going to be a vacancy. Nina Van Enden is going to be coming back on our committee as of your appointment, again, of her. With that being said, we will have a full complement, which I'm very proud of. We've been working on this for two years to get a full committee. And Captain Michael Arala is our staff liaison person. The mission, the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee advises the city commission on matters related to parking, traffic flow, traffic patterns, and complete streets. Complete streets are a system of streets planned, designed, and constructed to provide appropriate access to all legal users in the matter that promotes safe and efficient movement of people and goods, whether by car, truck, transit, assistive devices, foot, or bicycle. The accomplishments, the past year, installation of several new pedestrian crossing signs, McClellan Avenue Speed Study, and the speed has been increased on McClellan between Wright Street and Fair Avenue from 25 to 35 because of that speed study, and it is working very effectively. Work to educate the public on pedestrian, bicycle, crosswalk safety. The Marquette Police Department has done several public service announcements. Helped individual schools and businesses resolve simple requests, including working with the DDA, adding handicap signs on Washington Street, 3rd Street, and Bluff Street. Helped resolve individual on-street parking issues and neighbor disputes. Added no-parking signage in the West Alley next to the Bluff Street parking ramp. Intersection changes by the city and supported by the committee. Discussed in support of roundabouts by the committee. Parking issues and sign placement throughout the city. Public comment and traffic-related issues addressed. Continue to work with the Police Department regarding problem speeding errors within the city and designated enforcement, and continue to work directly with the DDA and parking-related issues in the downtown area. I apologize for this screen. It came out a lot smaller than I wanted it to. Boy, it's even hard for me. Review of ongoing traffic study. Consider traffic impact of new hospital location. These are our goals for the upcoming year, by the way. And monitor South Lake Shore Boulevard and Berge Avenue when the new apartments and the condos open on South Lake Shore Boulevard. And continue to educate on bicycle, pedestrian, and crosswalk safety. And monitor high-traffic crash intersections, and work with the Police Department to reduce them. In 2017, our high-traffic, five high-traffic crash areas were McClellan and US 41, Washington and McClellan, Front and Washington, 7th and Washington, Lincoln and Washington. I think you can kind of see a pattern there. In 2018, our seven high-traffic area, traffic crash areas are US 41 in Washington, Washington and 5th, Wright and Sugarloaf, the roundabout, the Washington-McClellan intersection, South Front and Hampton, 7th and Washington, and Lincoln and Washington. One thing about the roundabouts, there have not been any severe collisions because of the roundabouts, where we did have some major accidents with fatalities there in the path. So, the roundabouts are working from that standpoint. Then, goals for upcoming year, review the new street lighting system. And by street lighting, we mean the new traffic control lighting in all locations around Marquette for traffic flow. Consider traffic impact of the new hospital location on Washington Street and Berge. Consider the traffic impact of the new NMU dorms and the apartments. Continue and increase public service announcements concerning pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicle safety, and continue to work with the Police Department on both traffic and parking-related issues as they arise. How can we better accommodate winter pedestrians, especially students, in the Presque Isle area? Are issues that we need to discuss this year, because we are seeing major road construction on Presque Isle, and we are seeing new sidewalks put in a non-Presque Isle where they had not existed before. So, that is a real positive. Now, issues and discussion, how can we provide safer pedestrian cyclists access across M28 US 41? As we speak, there are new sidewalks being put across US 41 and McClellan there, which is a huge improvement. And I understand there will be some additional lighting put up there, so hopefully this will make it much safer for people to cross there. Issues to discuss, three. Street networks in South Marquette. Lack of connectivity. Long route between the destinations between Bothwell and Superior Hills. It might be appropriate for the city engineer and the Marquette Public Schools to very seriously look at and discuss what can be done to at least route bus traffic between Superior Hills and Bothwell, because there is major bus traffic in that area, and that would cut down on a lot of routing if we had connectivity there, which we do not have. Issues and discussion, four. Connectivity of West Washington Corridor. Heavy congestion at corners. No alternate routes south. With the new hospital, we have a big block of land there. We're thinking that a lot of the people will use the roundabout to get onto 41, but they have the choice of going down Berge to 7th and/or McClellan, so we are going to see some traffic impact there when the new hospital opens up. So, we will be looking at that and monitoring. Any questions?
Mr. Plard?
Walt, how much control do we have, the city have over the US 41?
Virtually none. That's, you know, the Highway Department. I don't know how they came about making the decision to finally do something better at 41 and McClellan, but at least it's being done. It'll be interesting to see how it works. To me, the sidewalk seems a little narrow for, you know, street cleaning during the wintertime. Might be something they have to look at in the future. But at least it'll give people that are crossing there an island to stand on instead of right out in traffic, because I've crossed there myself a couple of times, and it's scary. It's pretty fast and furious when you're standing there in traffic.
Yeah, I apologize for not having my microphone on. The question I asked was, how much control do we, as the City of Marquette, have over the US 41 bypass? Thank you for your answer.
Right.
And I believe, am I correct when I say that that's really, belongs to the state?
Yes, total state. I'm done.
Mr. Frazier?
You're probably kind of bored this year with your board not having any roundabouts to amend. I'm sure that's probably discussed. I mean, you guys are probably just bored. No mic, nothing, roundabouts. What are you guys going to do with your board? But, I'll say this, Walt, you live in Lake Shore. You see, we've got an email from somebody a while back, and commented about possibly by the Airman Restaurant making that like a two-way or three-way stop. I know you guys have possibly looked at, I've talked to you about before, because coming on Washington Street, turning right, no problem. Turning left can be an issue, because you can't see. So, have you guys looked at that? Just wondering, out of curiosity, just for the public.
We're always looking at traffic flow, but things are changing so much along the Boulevard right now. We honestly don't know what's going to happen until, you know, the condos and the apartments open up along there, and we do experience more traffic flow. So, you know, something might have to be done because of the volume of traffic. It will be increasing.
I agree. It's a good thing to It's a good thing to just kind of look at, because I know, I've noticed if we come down Washington Street, it's hard to see going left. If you sneak out far enough, you can see, but to obey by traffic and watch pedestrians is understanding. Then, I know coming down, you know, Berge Street, there's no stop, but people just think it's a stop, say, and they cruise right through. So, if you guys will let on your plate, so I hope you took a good luck on your plate.
Yeah, thank you.
Walt, I think that your committee is an interesting committee. So, you've got a lot going on right now with the construction that's been going on. You've got changing, roads are changing. You've got the roundabouts. And when that new hospital opens up, it's really gonna change traffic patterns, I would think. So, you've got a lot coming in the next couple of years, so.
Washington Street, Berge, McClellan, and Seventh are going to be some real, you know, things to keep an eye on, you know. And it's, one thing I need to say too, is it's nice when the public gives us a call or lets us know, and we do have a public comment session at our meetings every month. We meet the third Tuesday of every month, and the public's more than welcome to attend.
Very good. You've got an exciting committee, so things are happening. Okay, well, thank you very much for coming. Hope to see you again soon with another presentation.
Next year.
Thank you. Tonight, we have one public hearing. That public hearing is for street vacations. City Clerk, could you give us the background in that, please?
Thank you, Mayor, background. The city of Marquette in two thousand fifteen sold property to Duke Life Point for the construction of a new hospital campus on the site of the Homestead Edition, and the property use and site plan for the hospital was approved by the Planning Commission via planned unit development in August of two thousand fifteen. The city of Marquette has no further need to reserve the unapproved portions of the platted right-of-way for Reed, Hill, and Berge Streets within the boundaries of the pre-approved planned unit development for the UP Health System Marquette Replacement Hospital. The vacation of those platted streets is necessary to convey a clean title to the new property owner as part of the finalization of land title work. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing to consider the street vacations outlined in the attached map. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna open a public hearing. If anybody wishes to address us on this item, now is your time. You've got three minutes. We need name and address. Basically, what we have here is three streets that were platted but never developed, and now we're gonna get rid of them as if they never existed. So, does anybody wish to address us on this item? Anybody? Seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have a motion. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I don't have the verbiage.
Commissioner.
Get in there.
Commissioner Smith.
Move that we close the public hearing.
I'm looking for a motion. Motion to approve. Do you want to make the motion to approve?
I apologize, it's not on our sheet, so I'm a little off here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the public hearing for street vacations.
Is there a second?
Your honor, just as a point of clarification, it's a motion to approve the street vacations outlined in the attached map. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. I apologize.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay, I'll say, I'll reiterate one more time. The motion is to conduct a public hearing to consider the street vacations outlined in the attached map.
Oh, the cover sheet is wrong. I apologize. I'm reading from a different script, too.
Okay, so I had it right?
I don't have your sheet.
Okay. City Clerk? City Clerk, you're the...
You can answer.
That's exactly...
Tell me, you want to read it back?
The recommendation is to conduct a public hearing to consider the street vacations outlined in the attached map.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Smith?
We're in it.
I think you just conducted the public hearing, did you not? The motion really should be to approve the street vacations after the public hearing was held, but I...
Okay, let's do this. City Clerk, tell us how you want it to be read.
Exactly as our city attorney said, the motion should be to approve the vacations of the three streets listed after the public hearing.
Commissioner Smith, did you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to remove the three streets listed per our most recent discussion.
Very good. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I second the motion. I did the heavy lifting.
Any further comment on this? Okay, seeing none, it is a resolution. We do need a roll-call vote. City Clerk, would you please have us do that?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plourde?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Tim Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Campana.
Yes, that carries seven-zero. Thank you. Next, we come to the consent agenda. Who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
All in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed. That carries seven-zero. Next, we come to new business. First item on new business is the sale of parcel thirty-five of the Hartwood Forest City Clerk, could you give us the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor, background. On April twenty-fifth, two thousand eleven, the city commission adopted the ad hoc committee report on the Hartwood Forest with amendments recommended by the city planning commission. The city is now moving forward with implementation of the plan. As a general synopsis, one hundred and twelve acres are in the process of being sold for development. One hundred acres are recommended for placement in the community forest program, and four hundred and ninety-two acres are recommended for placement in conservation easement status. Development. Plans found in the proposal submitted by Current and Company slash Rippling River Resort for parcel thirty-five call for an expansion of the adjacent campground. Community forest. The community forest program provides for an agency such as the Superior Watershed Partnership to purchase the property as a land trust and hold in conservation recreational use. The city may receive up to fifty cents on the dollar for the property with a program cap of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The land selected for designation was vetted through the Community Development Department and Superior Watershed Partnership based upon existing plans, pending community master plan update by the Planning Commission, and the discussion with third parties and represents protecting the integrity of the existing trailhead in the Carp River Valley on the west side of County Road five-five-three. Conservation easement, like Clark Park, property may be placed in a conservation easement with a third-party steward to monitor the adherence to the conditions of the easement. In general, conservation easements will place the property as open space in perpetuity, subject to terms and conditions that the city, as the landowner, may place on the easement. It should be noted that the land previously identified as future planned area has been removed from the recommendations. It was a consensus of staff, again, after reviewing of plans, pending plans, third parties, that it would likely be in the best interest of the city to head in the direction we are recommending, recognizing the creation of somewhat imperfect balance between development and open space. Recreation, there is no doubt silent sports are an economic driver, perhaps not as quantifiable as a direct impact from construction labor. However, as the twenty-first century economy evolves, it does play a role. Therefore, contingent with a pro-sale and land designation, it is also recommended that a written plan be developed by the user groups to clearly identify the expectations for designation of uses, sharing of space, and maintenance. The manner of evolution for the recreation assets in the past is no longer a viable model and should be reconciled through planning and updated agreements with the city. Fiscal effect, the city will realize one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars on the sale of the property with added benefit of tax income on the property. As well, the sale of the property will contribute towards bond debt retirement. Recommendation, adopt a resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to negotiate the sale of the property. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I would like to have the Director of Community Development, Dennis Stackwitz, give us some more information. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give a short presentation this evening, and it'll be short by Dennis' standards, so I'll try to keep it under fifteen minutes. But I thought it would be good, and this will apply to parcel thirty-five, parcels nine, ten, eleven, and twelve throughout the entire Hartwood Forest. I'd like to not only speak to the city commission, but also to those members present to the community this evening and those who may be watching on television, and let them know what we've been working on for the past couple of years, if not, if not longer, on the Hartwood Forest plan. So, I'm gonna speak quite a bit to the history here for the benefit of folks who may not know it, because it actually is really important to take a step back and look at all of the planning opportunities that have taken place over time, including some offers for purchase and things that have gone back and forth. But the city did purchase the property in two thousand and five for five million dollars. It was a little bit more than twenty-two hundred acres. In two thousand and six, there was the Hartwood Forest Land Fund for Land Use Development and Protection Plan. Really what this had, this tied in with the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but it was the bond payment for the property. We had to adopt a plan for that. And within that, there were a number of items that spoke towards the reason for the purchase of the property. I have them listed here, but it's in preserving and fostering environmental stewardship, having the city being able to control what happens with the property, maintain the motorized and non-motorized trail system that existed in the forest, enhance long-term prosperity for the region by making that the hub for passive and active recreation, enhance quality of life for the residents by having a connection to the natural environment, and also drive economic development through the potential sale of some of the property or working with developers to better the community. There was a committee forum. There are some members that spoke already today. That was in two thousand nine. They were charged with three things that came out of the motion for that, and that was establish areas for conservation, look for areas for potential development, and identify partnerships for the development and maintenance of recreational properties. Now, they met every week for a year, and in February two thousand and ten, they produced a draft, which we call the Hartwood Plan. It was actually titled the Hartwood Forest Land Ad Hoc Committee Report and Recommendation to the City Commission. That report was then given to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission, as they normally do with things, take things apart, put it back together about six different ways, and come back with a very thorough report on it. And that was presented to the City Commission in two thousand and eleven. And at that time, the Planning Commission did concur with the recommendations that the committee had, and they made a few minor changes to the property disposition. And actually, what that did at the time was it cut parcel thirty-five essentially in half from forty acres to twenty acres, and there was a parcel along M five-five-three that went from development to future planned area. So the city commission adopted this plan, it was actually, if I believe correctly, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven. The city commission adopted the ad hoc and the planning commission recommendations jointly as the plan and the blueprint for moving forward. From two thousand and eleven to the present, the city has sold eighty acres to the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority. I believe that was for some gravel operations, or they needed to have a couple of expansion cells in order to get some approval for, through the M D Q. I don't remember exactly, but it was directly related to the function of the permitting of the landfill. We also had a couple inquiries from Marquette Township during that time. One of those, I believe, did make it to the city commission, but it failed for lack of support. More recently, in the two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, and the just recently adopted two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty strategic plans, there is an item that is implementation of these recommendations for the property. With that being said, staff operates under the strategic plan. That's how we take our guidance from the city commission. We take the strategic plan. We budget money. It goes through a process. And with that being said, we had ordered appraisals for the property that were identified for development. And then earlier in this year, we sent out requests for qualifications on parcels nine through twelve and thirty-five. I'd like to speak a little bit to the historical property use. It's definitely historical for passive and active recreation. We know the mountain bike trails. I mean, there's probably some folks in the, definitely in the community, I think there's a couple in the, in the audience that were out there tooling around on bikes back when it was Benson Forest was managing it, or even before that. People have used it for hiking. Carp River's in there. It's fishing. And also, Trail four-seventeen crosses that in the wintertime through permit with the state of Michigan for the snowmobile trail as a cut across. And as you can see over here, on the right-hand side, that's taken from the Nikamenon Trails Network website, where you can see there's a plethora of activity that goes on for hiking and biking. Now, the expansion and intensity of use over time has led to, eventually led to agreements and license, municipal licenses for biking and the snowmobile trail uses. So, there is, there are agreements in place that allow several trails to be operated and maintained, and those are executed by the city commission. I think they were most recently done in two thousand sixteen for the Nikamenon Trail Network and the snowmobile, one that has about a five-year time period on it also. And that also includes for the snowmobile trail, they also have a license for a bridge and things like that. But that has expanded over time, and more recently, there was a moratorium placed on trail building by the city manager after we discussed to staff that if we're gonna be moving forward with the plan for this property, it would be an excellent idea to bring all the parties together and get a handle on what's going on out there. And more recently, we've had the mentioned establishment of a campground, which is adjacent to the property, which is kind of like the, you know, that's the small little incubator that is gonna play a very important role in this property being something dynamic for not only the city residents, but also the region as a whole in terms of economic development. I think it would be important to mention the community master plan in these discussions, because that is something else where the Planning Commission pulls apart and puts back together six or eight different times ideas for the community that are based on a great amount of public meetings and public input over time. And in the most recent update to the community master plan, we can see via the future land use map that the Planning Commission has coded the property in conjunction with the Hartwood Forest Plan recommendations. And in addition to that, they've heard quite a bit from the community that the conservation land perhaps would be more appropriate than the future planned areas, which I'll speak to a little bit in a bit when we get to that. And then also, the recreational facilities portion of the master plan has identified the N T N trailhead as a pretty important asset for the community. This is a map of the recommended plan implementation, and I will speak to each one and break it down a little bit. But essentially, we're looking at the red areas would be the areas identified for development, which are exactly consistent with the original Hartwood ad hoc committee report and planning commission recommendations that were adopted by the city commission. The area that is gray or lavender, depending on if your eyesight is good or as bad as mine... mine, is identified as potential community forest land. And that's a program where the State of Michigan and the USDA Forest Service help us place the land in a trust where we can get some return on investment, and it also guarantees the community conservation status in perpetuity. And then the green is identified as additional areas of conservation, of which we could place conservation easements on. Speaking to the properties related to development, again, we have, these are consistent with the recommendations found in the ad hoc committee report and the work done by the Planning Commission, and also the last master plan update. We are recommending that these properties be sold in accordance with the city code, has a process in it for property sales. And after going through the RFQ process, you can see on the agenda, we have two local developers that are interested in doing that. These areas total approximately a hundred and twelve areas, or a hundred and twelve acres, I'm sorry. And moving forward with the sale of property, the city does have the opportunity to do local development agreements that will not only, as listed, reasonably accommodate any existing uses, they will also look for a partnership with the developers to guarantee some form of investment, so we can get an ROI on that property that's satisfactory to both parties. The community forest land that I had talked about under the joint program is really property that's held in trust. At this time, the potential maximum amount for those hundred acres we could receive would be four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that's approximately fifty cents on the dollar. That's the maximum match that we could get through that program. Essentially, we apply as a partner with, in this case, it would be the Superior Watershed Partnership, because they are a land trust. And if we were able to secure the funding, the city would realize potential maximum income of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That, of course, is based upon an appraisal that we would have to have done on that property. It's a little bit more than what those appraisals were for the property that we're selling now, but we also believe there's a little bit higher potential for value there, because there's roughly about a mile or so of Carp River waterfrontage on that. So not being an expert on that, I, you know, we did apply, or are applying for the, the maximum amount on that. So it's a, you know, it plays, it's a mechanism to place the land in conservation, but at the same time, the city could get some return on the investment. Again, the, we're applying for the maximum under that program, though. So it's, for those who are wondering, why don't you just do that for all of the Hartwood property and get a bunch of money for it? We're not be able to do that. There, there are limits on what you can, what you can designate. And these areas were actually chosen because of the benefits that we think will help us obtain the money, that we're protecting the Carp River Valley all the way out to nearly the Morgan Falls area. There's some additional smaller waterfalls in there. There's an existing trail network already, and the bonus points for recreation of the NTN Trailhead, which has clearly been identified as a, as a good asset for the city. And the last portion of the recommendation would be to place the remainder of the property within the city limits into conservation easements. This is approximately four hundred and ninety-two acres. Now, when you designate conservation easements, you are able to designate permitted uses within that conservation easement. Obviously, the goal for the State of Michigan, when you, they're, because they're the ones that you apply to, to put it in conservation easement, is to have as much open space as possible. However, you can designate uses in there, such as moving a trail, if there needs to be a facility for recreation or things like that. That can be identified ahead of time. There is a property steward that would need to be identified. Those can be land trusts, but particularly, it's a third-party entity that makes sure you're doing what you said you were going to do with the conservation status of the property. And this was pretty much a challenging exercise in that, you know, you look back to the recommendations and, and some of the things that the Planning Commission originally looked at before the master plan came out, and talk a little bit about that, talking about picking things apart and putting them back together. Well, working with the Planning Commission over time, and as a staff exercise in the Community Development Department, we went back to a slope analysis for a lot of that property that's, that falls within this green area, and some of it was identified as purple. And when you do a slope analysis, analysis for that, and you match it up with the available future utilities that we could have for that area, the pressure district is extremely limited for the South McLellan area right now. It's actually in the strategic plan for two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty to look at possibly finding a way to fund that, so we can get more water down south. If you were to talk to Mr. Curran about his campground, we've had some challenges back and forth to, to try and work out to deal with that as well. And the, the investment for that water supply would far exceed any investment that could go on that property currently. I believe we've had it at about four to five million dollars for that, for that upgrade. And I could be embellishing, but I, I'm pretty sure I'm close. It is listed in the strategic plan. It's a lot of money. I'll just leave it at that, okay? So given with the slope analysis and the, and the utility availability, we double-checked our work and went back to the, what was called the South Area Land Use Plan. That was from two thousand and four. And really, in that plan, there was only, I believe, a hundred and forty-six acres that were identified as potential development property in the entire South Mar, uh, South, what we call the South McLellan area, which is basically anything south of the landfill primarily on the Hartwood Plan. So we're recommending for that to be placed into conservation easements. As far as speaking to the user groups that are currently out there, I would strongly encourage that user groups coordinate planning with the city Community Services Department, John and his crew. They do work with the NTN quite a bit. I think we should take it another step and look at written plans on an established time basis to make sure that we're fully coordinating and we have a system of checks and balances, so that not only with the user groups in terms of recreation, you're also going to have developers making investments on the property. It's going to need to be somewhat of good collaboration, communication, and coordination to make this something that is really a great benefit for the greater community. And hopefully, I didn't take fifteen minutes. I wasn't timing it, but I'm available for questions. So thank you for your time.
Commissioners, any questions? It's clear. Thank you. Okay, before we move on, we had a couple people that wanted to talk to us about this. At the front, Mr. Davis, you would be first. Just give us your name. We don't need your address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, members of the community, myself. I am a board member of the Nikamenon Trails Network Council, and I sit as the chair of the Single Track Committee for that organization. Myself and our executive director, Lori Hawsworth, are here if anyone in the community or any of the commissioners have questions. And tonight, I am speaking to reaffirm the conversations that have occurred between the City of Marquette and the Nikamenon Trails Network, specifically that we, the Nikamenon Trails Network, are supportive of the sales as proposed of the greater plan for protecting the Hartwood properties. We have been assured that our executive director, Lori Hawsworth, will be directly representing our organization during the development of the local agreements for parcels nine through twelve and thirty-five, as well as conservation easements for thirty-five and the other Hartwood properties proposed for the Community Forest Program. Easements that will, that will need to be developed with some flexibility to accommodate current and future trails. We respectfully ask for our organization to be considered as easement holder for parcels twenty-four and thirty-five, given the close proximity to the current location of the south trailhead. We also ask that should the Community Forest Program be unsuccessful in being selected for full funding this year, that the NTN have the opportunity to purchase the whole parcel thirteen. With the popularity of the trails, we also wish to continue discussions with city representatives to explore alternative entrance and exit from the trailhead with expanding parking and support facilities to ensure community safety. We look forward to solidifying the integrity of the trail network throughout the Hartwood property and all our hard work, and countless volunteers and employees that have dedicated making these trails a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veredol.
Frank Jeff Veredol, "These are my opinions, Marquette." The revised plan as depicted seems less impactful than what we feared on July ninth. This would depend upon the width of the drive and paths, and how salted the parcel becomes with campsites, fixtures, and service buildings. There need to be too much clearing to accommodate full-sized RVs. If a road is run through, the area is considered pretty much developed, thus we must subtract the acreage from the up to three hundred and fifty-six acres the city intended to sell at the time of purchase. Remember that the prospective development of parcel thirty-five came about as the result of ad hoc committee meetings at which a lot of developmental influence was spread, regardless of the committee's representation. Accessibility to thoroughfares was the main objective. Generally, I agree with putting any development nearer to thoroughfares and to the city, because that leaves a larger contiguous area to enjoy from within the parcel. One drawback is the demise of our scenic entrance from the south city limits. It's reminiscent of this board's blocking the view of Lake Superior from our southeast entrance, although this parcel thirty-five proposal won't necessarily pose that sort of risk. Of concern, though, is whether lighting would tarnish the serenity. At least the campground is compatible with the surrounding land uses. One thing the ad hoc committee apparently failed to see is the importance of parcel thirty-five, and its importance, is that it provides connectivity between two other wooded parcels, and that building there would disrupt established trail segments. And here, this ad hoc committee was mentioned in the first paragraph of tonight's agenda supplement. If the appellate can explain how it will minimize the impact and maintain the trail connections, and the proposal is approved, let us subtract the size of parcel thirty-five from the three hundred and fifty-six acres minus the hundred acres that were already sold, sold to the landfill, seventy of which they'll never need over the projected life of the facility. A concern that figures in here is our lack of collaboration with the township over what they propose to do with their portions. The context of the city news release that followed the commission's March seventeen, two thousand and five vote is that up to three hundred and fifty-six acres of development is across the entire two thousand three hundred and seventy-three acres. In other words, if the city developed all three hundred and fifty-six, there'd be none left for the township to develop. So do this right by getting with the township soon, because we're sick of being lied to.
Okay, Commissioners, we need someone to make a motion. Commissioner Stonehouse.
Your Honor, I, I motion to adopt a resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to negotiate the sale of the property.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel.
Second.
Any comments, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I think, forgive me. I think what we have seen with the report as rendered by Mr. Stackowitz was a very long, very involved, very detailed planning process that got us exactly where we are today. And it was well done by many different groups with many different divergent inputs and outputs. So the property sale that we're discussing has been very well examined, looked at, public input has been significant over a long period of time. I was on the commission at the time when much of that occurred, and listening to Mr. Stackowitz's talk was almost a trick down memory lane, because you began to remember the specific actions that the commission took at the specific times and the discussions that were held during those times. I think this is a remarkable example, and, and really a very commendable example, in how groups can work together for a common output. I mean, certainly, the NTN has stepped up to the plate with, with how they can make it work. The City of Marquette has stepped up with the things that we can do. Mr. Curran and his properties have stepped up as to be, in a way, perhaps, the catalyst that can put it all together. And that is a very good thing for this community, because what it shows with the city and with the groups that work within the city is that things happen and things are accomplished when people work together. And this is an example of that. Certainly, we have yet a longer road to go, and we'll go. We'll get on it, and we'll take one step and another and another, and we'll eventually get to where we want to. But this is a great, great effort, I think, that we're making tonight. And I, I thank, I thank everybody who spoke for their feelings. I certainly thank again Mr. Stackowitz for his work in putting that briefing together, and I commend the city manager for the work that he did in serving really as the point man to get us to the position that we are now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel, anything?
Thanks, Commissioner Stonehouse, for leaving me absolutely nothing else to say. I, I just have to echo, just to see the, the process this, this whole thing went through from start to finish, from city staff, from the city manager's office to the planners, to getting together and walking the property with the NTN people, hearing what they've got to say, taking their considerations and concerns into, into effect. The Currens and their ability to envision to do what they've done with the property thus far, and to, again, work with as many entities, it takes a lot of trust and patience, and, and I just really appreciate what's, what, what I've been a part of here. I think that this is really a sign of things to come for other areas that, that we may be considering working with, because this is how the process works, and it was just so great to be a part of it. So thank you for everybody involved, and, and I really look forward to watching this develop as, as the days go on. So, thank you.
Commissioner Plard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to point out, too, that this culmination here, what we're going to do tonight, also illustrates that we did listen to everybody that spoke and publicly commented a couple meetings ago about this. We also took into effect, into consideration the many emails that we, we received. All of us received a lot of emails, and, and the vast majority of those emails were from people who don't live here. But it was important to hear their opinions, and their opinions were that the trail network is very, very important, that it's very important to the City of Marquette, that we had some very, very well-written emails sent to us talking about the whole Hartwood area and what the trail system does for us. And so I just want to point out that, yes, we did take that into serious consideration, and it was very effective. I think it's, it was an opportunity for people who don't live in the City of Marquette, don't even live in the UP, to actually have a voice in what happens at a place that they say many of those, almost all the emails that I've gotten said, "We'd love to come to Marquette, and we'd love the trail system." So I want to thank the people that did get involved in that, but as Mayor Protem Stonehouse and Commissioner Schlegel mentioned, this has been a very, very ongoing process, and a lot of people got together. And I think, I think also, it's a great example of democracy in action. It's what the people want.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be honest, I wasn't sure which way I was going to vote tonight. I've been thinking about it all weekend, and it seemed like a really great deal. I just wanted to make sure that, that NTN was part of the process, and they, and they are, and I'm glad to hear them come up and speak tonight. I appreciate that. So I will be voting yes, and I appreciate the work of city staff, city manager, and NTN for working together on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier.
I recall, great, great comments by Commissioner Smith and Plard and Mr. Stonehouse. It's been a long process, you know, for the city to deal with, and the city's did a great job figuring everything out. And when Mr. Curran first, first approached us about buying the property, the staff worked with NTN to make sure it was okay. His plan was, you know, a basic plan was evolved, and they, they approved of it. You know, the, the city manager did say he was willing to work with NTN if they wanted to buy the property, but Curran came through, and he says he wants to buy it, and that Jaster's Campground, we said, okay. And NTN approved the process, so we think it's all been a lot, a lot, a lot of people talking back and forth, and it's all been best we can do to get the- and forth and it's all been best we can do to get things through. I think it's a good process.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Question and then a comment. As to Mr. Verito's question, if I remember right, sorry, Mike Angelique, the township property, they, at this point, don't have the ability to purchase it or are not interested, if I'm correct, last I heard?
I think they're interested, but it's not a high priority for them right now.
Like, they have to worry about their roads and things like that, not, that's what I lost thought. With that, the only thing is I have a comment. I agree with Commissioner Stonehouse, you did put it very nicely, but I'm not going to get into, I've said this over and over about 35, so I'm not going to waste anybody's time, but I will be voting no this evening. I think that in the long run, it's nothing wrong with Mr. Curran's proposal, I just think that we could have, I think it's a little, it's not necessarily short-sighted, like I said last time, I don't want any of you to get mad at me for saying it again, but I think that things are different than 2011 and I think that our biking community has changed and I think parcel 35 is very important to be continued owned by the city or possibly the NTN, but I know my vote will not, not let this pass, but my own good conscience, I'll be voting no.
Thank you. To me, this whole situation's been a very involved process, somewhat controversial. It's good to see the different groups come together and make this work. To me, this is the best possible solution we can have. I think everybody's happy. I think that we owe debt of gratitude to Mr. Curran. If it were not for him, I mean, he's going to pay the full price for this property, he's going to do minimal development, and he's going to put the trails into conservation easement, which means they won't be used, they won't be up for development. So he's doing as much for the NTN as anyone could. We could have sold that property to who, to another developer, and that other developer could have come in and done something really big and ugly. This is the best scenario we could have. As far as buyers, after we put out the request for qualifications, it was only the NTN and Mr. Curran that came forth. There were no buyers. We hadn't had buyers since 2005. So if we got someone who wants to buy it, the city thinks, and with the city with their impending tax decline that we're going to get very soon, it's very important that we find another source of revenue. So I'm going to vote yes. I think this is a win-win for everybody. Anybody else? Commissioner Stonehouse?
If I may indulge just one more second, because this property is being sold for commercial use, the city will be receiving taxes from it. That's a good thing, there's nothing wrong with that, that helps that deficit that we have. Other people that receive taxes from it, Peter White Public Library, Marquette Schools, that's a good thing. That is a very good thing and we need to realize the value of having property that can produce tax revenue for those two great institutions so critical for our city. Thank you.
Real quick, just senior center also, I mean, there are, for the seniors. Any further comments, questions, discussions? Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
No.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. That passes 6-1. Okay, we move to the next new business item, which is the sale of parcels 9, 10, 11, and 12, the Hartwood Forest property. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, on April 25, 2011, the city commission adopted the ad hoc committee report on the Hartwood Forest with amendments recommended by the planning commission. The city is now moving forward with implementation of the plan. As a general synopsis, 112 acres are in process of being sold for development, 100 acres are recommended for placement in the Community Forest Program, and 492 acres are recommended for placement in conservation easement status. Development, plans found in the proposed submitted, proposals submitted by Veridio Group for parcels 9 through 12 request consideration for development of a mixed-use, low-impact technology campus. Community Forest, the Community Forest Program provides for an agency such as Superior Watership Partnership to purchase the property as a land trust and hold in conservation, recreational use. The city may receive up to 50 cents on the dollar for the property with a program cap of $390,000. The land selected for designation was vetted through the Community Development Department and Superior Watershed Partnership based upon existing plans, the pending community master plan update by the planning commission, and discussion with third parties and represents protecting the integrity of the existing trailhead and the Carp River Valley on the west side of 553. Conservation easement, like Clark Park, property may be placed in conservation easement with a third-party steward to monitor the adherence to the conditions of the easement. In general, conservation easements will place the property as open space in perpetuity, subject to terms and conditions that the city as a landowner may place on the easement. It should be noted that the land previously identified as future planned area has been removed from the recommendation. It was a consensus of staff, again, after reviewing of plans, pending plans, third parties, that it would be likely be in the best interest of the city to head in the direction we are recommending, recognizing the creation of a somewhat imperfect balance between development and open space. Recreation, there is no doubt silent sports are an economic driver, perhaps not as quantifiable as the direct impact from construction labor. However, as the 21st century economy evolves, it does play a role. Therefore, contingent with proposed sale and land designation, it is also recommended that a written plan be developed by the user groups to clearly identify the expectations for design of uses, sharing of space, and maintenance. The manner of evolution for the recreation assets in the past is no longer a viable model and should be reconciled through planning and updated agreements with the city. Fiscal effect, the city may realize $573,000 from the sale of the parcels with the added benefit of tax income on the property. As well, the sale of the property will contribute towards bond debt retirement. Recommendation, adopt a resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to negotiate the sale of the properties. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Verito, you wish to address us?
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. Note how much of the agenda supplement cover sheet for this item was cut and pasted from the parcel 35 cover sheet. More so than on parcel 35 proposal, these are the parcels on which we need to be concerned with losing the stunning effect we experience when approaching Marquette from the south. I've seen the effects across the country in dozens of places. Developing parcels 9, 10, and 11 in a sensitive manner may not cause much impact if the driveway is unassuming, the buildings are constructed in earth colors, and a thick wooded buffer is left between the easternmost building and the county road. We'd hope not to see the buildings from the road, at least during the green half of the year. Lighting is another concern around and on the buildings as well as along the road. Parcel 12 is an entirely different story. Originally, a commercial node was proposed there, maybe a convenience store and a restaurant, something the public at large could use and which would maximize the accessibility from the roads. To be sold predominantly for the office use to one entity isn't appropriate at this location. Parcel 12 is also valuable as is because it enhances the beauty for those who enter Marquette from the south, to build there with the track from the entrance to Marquette along both roads. However, if this board is bent on developing the parcel, then it ought to be dedicated to retail, which is compatible with the ski hill nearby, mixed trail users, campers, and those who are driving between Marquette, Gwin, and the airport. Parcells 9 through 11 seem more suitable for the proposal of a mixed-use, low-impact technology campus. Why parcel 12 isn't being handled as a separate item is beyond logic. Members who helped assume the agenda or assemble this agenda were not on the ball again, regardless of whether all four parcels are proposed for purchase by a single organization. The geographic composition is just so much different between the three of those and the one parcel number 12. And again, the authors of this agenda failed to have the appellant provide renderings to give us an idea of what they have in mind, how the buildings would appear, how they'd be situated, and what types of materials and lights would be utilized. We endured the same situation prior to our last meeting, even though the rendering is in fact existed. At some late point, this board will need to delay its decisions until after all the needed documents have appeared in an agenda packet. Earlier, another resident expressed the same opinion. The parcels were not numbered on the enclosed depiction in the packet. People aren't expected to know that the only place to find out was on the report itself.
Commissioners, who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Plard?
Your Honor, I move that we adopt a resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to negotiate the sale of the properties. That includes properties, parcels 9, 10, 11, and 12, the Hartwood Forest property.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Comments? Commissioner Plard, any?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I also want to mention that Mr. Anderson and Mr. Lankinen's comments are very well-taken as well. We, as the city commission, understand that there are many people who really want the sale of this property, aren't interested in recreational value, not to say there is none, but they aren't interested in it. They want to see the debt reduced from the city, they want to see the property sold and taken off and have the debt reduced, they want to see the tax possibilities come to the tax base of this, or added to the tax base of the city of Marquette. So while we've seen a lot of comment from NTN people who use the trails publicly, please understand there are a lot of people who, plain and simple, disagree with that. Again, I think personally, this is a great plan, and I also thank all the people that came together again, thank Dennis Stackowitz and his department and the people that worked hard on this because this, again, I think is a very, very good solution to this issue, to get the debt reduction that we need, but still preserve the recreational possibilities of this area.
Mr. Frazier, anything?
I agree, Commissioner Plard, I mean, this is just the intent to sell, this is not for sale for sure, it's just agreeing to let the city possibly sell the property and then they'll work with them and then if the property is bought, they'll work with the developer, it has to go through the planning commission, there's a lot of steps to go through to develop the property. So something's going to be happening right away. And the developer understands the importance of it and he understands how important the trails are to people, so he'll work with them. He's a really good developer, they've proven their cost to the city and they'll work to make everything's okay. And like I said, this is a lot of big property everybody uses, but it's also a burden on the taxpayers. That's what we try to protect the city. And so there's a lot of things that, I was explaining when, I'm a boater, I'm involved, I like marinas, but not everybody does, not everybody likes marinas, so why should the city burden taxpayers that have to pay for the marinas when nobody uses them, same thing with this property? Not everybody uses them, so why burden everybody else with it? So it's just something that's going to be happening and I agree it's a great plan and be good for everybody.
Comments? Commissioner Schlegel?
I think this is a great opportunity for us to develop these parcels in a way that is, and bring some good jobs to the area, but to develop the parcels in a way that is going to be very beneficial to the city of Marquette. I'm looking forward to seeing this move forward, when it moves, if the sale moves forward, the site plan review, the process as it continues on, and I think that we'll, all said and done, I think that they've been doing a very nice job with the development of the entire corridor along McClellan 553 to keep as much of the development from eyesight and back behind wooded buffers and things along those lines. They've had a great plan from the beginning there. So this is a really good opportunity for us here and I think that it's a natural step, so. 25 cents.
Thank you. This is probably, I believe, the first legitimate offer we've ever had on a property. We're not going to get a lot more. We'd be wise to take it. The potential developer is a very reputable developer. Dependable. He'll do, he'll finish what he says he's going to do. And he's going to respect the trail system there. So he'll build it, it'll look good, the trails will remain, he may enhance the trails. And as Commissioner Schlegel says, potentially, there will be some jobs, jobs coming to Marquette, decent-paying jobs. That is a very big thing. Helps keep young people here and that's what we want. So I'm all in favor of this. We couldn't ask for a better situation right now. More comments? That would be a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, carries 7-0. Okay, our third new business item of the evening is the proposed charter amendment for the Board of Light and Power, dealing with the payment in lieu of taxes calculation. City Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the city by its Board of Light and Power owns and operates the electric utility system that serves the city and surrounding areas. The city charter provides for the payment of a portion of those system revenues to the city in lieu of taxes that would otherwise be paid if the system property were privately owned. The city and Board of Light and Power Administration have determined that it is prudent to amend the city charter to revise the calculation related to such payments as follows. From the revenues of the Board of Light and Power, they'll should be paid within 30 days at the end of each month or other such period as may be required by law to the treasurer for deposit in the general fund of the city, an amount equal to 5.5% of the dollar amount of gross retail sales of the electric utility during such month or other such period to all electric customers located upon the electric utilities' distribution system. This percentage may be reduced by the city commission for such time period as the commission, in its discretion, shall determine by resolution. The Board of Light and Power shall not make any other tax payment of any kind or any payment in lieu thereof to any other government, unit of government unless required by law. Fiscal effect, according to the fiscal year 2017 audited financial statements, the city general fund would receive approximately $2.6 million annually from the Board of Light and Power under the proposed amendment to the city charter. The attached graph shows the historical and projected pilt payments. Recommendation, adopt the attached resolution proposing charter amendments to revise electric system payments in lieu of taxes. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I would like to have the board of the, the chairman of the Board of Light and Power, Tom Tourville, to my right, a few words. Tom, whatever, just keep it short.
So we can, we can promise short, and I see the media's not interested in pilt either, so that's fine. So just a little bit of color and background on this, I wanted to kind of highlight the fact that this was a joint effort between us and the city. This is something that had been talked about for maybe six months. And further back than that, it was actually discussed in 2012 as part of the original, the big charter change that was done many years ago, was brought up at that time. Really, our goal is to simplify the administration and the calculation of the pilt so it's not such, such an administrative burden and that will provide us more consistency with budgeting, planning for both short and long term. I'd like everybody to know that this will not affect rates, this will also not affect the portion of pilt that is paid by different rate classes throughout our service territory. There will be no change in that. The amount of pilt we are talking about is consistent with what we have been paying for the last 20 years on a percentage basis. And just a little industry background, there's 2,200 public power utilities in the United States and the vast majority of them calculate pilt this way. And they also, the average pilt that is paid is about 5.5%, right in line with what we are talking about.
This charter amendment, honestly, it just makes sense. It simplifies things, it removes uncertainty in the calculation, you get essentially to the same dollar amount, but now you have something you can budget on, percent of gross electric sales. It's really as simple as that. And as Tom mentioned, it was, it's been a collaborative approach with the city manager and the Board of Light and Power Director, and for many, many years going back, this topic has been discussed informally for probably almost a dozen years, that some point someday, we really ought to simplify things with the charter. So it's, it's, I think it's good for the Marquette citizens of whom both boards represent. I think it's very appropriate to put this for our citizens to vote on on the ballot in November and that's, you know, of course, in your hands. Thanks.
Thank you. Stay there for a minute. Let me ask some questions. Do we have any questions before we proceed? We'll discuss it as we make the motion. We'll discuss it as we make the motion. Thank you. We need a motion. Commissioner Frazier.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the attached resolution proposing charter amendment to revise electric system payments in lieu of taxes, AKA pilt.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plard.
I'll second.
Any comments, Mr. Commissioner Frazier?
I think it's a good idea, just to make everything easier, and easier for the Board of Light part, easier for Gary, our city, that charges the finances to figure everything out.
Mr. Plard, anything?
Yes, thank you, your honor. As I, as I studied this issue and became more informed about it, it, I realized that it was actually just bringing it into the 21st century. It's just a new way to calculate, but as is mentioned by Mr. Tourville, Mr. Carpenter, it's, it's, it's not gonna affect anybody's electric bill in any way whatsoever, it's just a new way to recalculate what the city gets as far as taxes are concerned, and I think it's a good plan.
Thank you. I would like to mention that I, having worked with this, the city staff is entirely behind this. The old method of calculating the payment in lieu of taxes, very complex, very complicated, and this'll simplify it, and I hate to say this, but it'll actually benefit the city itself in the long run. So this is, to me, to others, I believe, a positive for the city. My only question was somewhere I read the wording that's gonna be on the ballot, and to me, it looked very, not very clear. Do we have the wording?
Yeah. Tom Colas is here from Miller Canfield, and I don't know if he can help us with that wording, or maybe Ron wants to take a shot at that, but I...
Mr. Colas, do you want to address us? Take the side, please.
You said you wanted to talk, so...
Mr. Colas is an attorney with our bond counsel, Miller Canfield.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Again, Tom Colas with Miller Canfield. Our role has actually been a joint representation between the city and the Board of Light and Power, and our role was really just to document the charter amendment itself. Again, as was previously stated by Mr. Carpenter, that this was a joint effort where both the city staff and the Board of Light and Power worked together to come up with what the actual calculation would be, using existing models that are out there in the industry. So this isn't a, this is a particular calculation that is used in certainly one other community in the state of Michigan. The particular question itself, the resolution is a lengthy resolution, but the question itself is a very short question that appears on page eight, and that's really just, you know, shell sections 11, 6, and 7 of the chapter 11 of the charter, be amended to revise the calculation related to the payment in lieu of taxes. Though, it will provide for what 11, 6, and 11, 7 look like, but the question itself will be just that short paragraph that relates to shell, the charter be amended to revise the calculation.
Okay, good. I just don't want confusion and...
So the, the actual question will not provide both samples, but the actual notices that go out will provide what 11, 6, and 11, 7 look like in their entirety, which are, you know, a couple pages long, but ultimately, the question itself will be short and succinct, and just as stated in that, that paragraph four in the resolution.
Good, thank you. That answers that. Thank you. Commissioners, anybody else have any questions? Tom, thank you very much. Appreciate the clarification.
My pleasure.
We would need a roll call on this, please.
Thank you, mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, carries seven zero. Four more to go. Next. Bids for the Prescott Band Shell Parking Lot Area Upgrades, Eagle Drive Improvements, and the Lighthouse Multi-Use Pathway Projects. City clerk, could we have that background, please?
Thank you, mayor. Background. Plans have been developed for the Prescott Band Shell Parking Area Upgrades, Eagle Drive Improvements, and the Lighthouse Multi-Use Pathway Projects. Work will consist of paving the gravel parking area for the Prescott Band Shell, paving up Eagle Drive in the Park Cemetery, and the construction of a multi-use pathway through the old Coast Guard Lighthouse property. Bids for the project were opened on July 19, 2018. Three contractors responded to our request for bids. Results are summarized. Engineers estimate $417,383.50. Overstar Inc., $407,323. Smith Construction, $489,555.75. Hubert Construction, $518,761.73. Tabulation and checking of the bids found errors on the contractors' bids. Errors were mathematical and had no bearing on the final outcome. Fiscal effect, the Prescott Band Shell Parking Areas Upgrade and Eagle Drive Projects were approved under the fiscal year 2018 budget. The Lighthouse Multi-Use Pathway is part of the overall plan to upgrade the former Coast Guard property. This was added to fiscal year 2018 budget by the reappropriation of the College Avenue Reconstruction Project funding. These projects will be part of the fiscal year 2018 bond package. Recommendation, award a contract for the Prescott Band Shell Parking Area Upgrades, Eagle Drive Improvements, and the Lighthouse Multi-Use Pathway Projects to Overstar Inc. in the amount of $407,323 based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Authorize the city manager to approve any unforeseen contingencies in an amount not to exceed 10% of bid amount. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel.
I'd make the motion to award the contract of the Prescott Band Shell Parking Area Upgrades, Eagle Drive Improvements, and the Lighthouse Multi-Use Pathway Projects to Overstar Inc. in the amount of $407,323 based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Authorize the city manager to approve any unforeseen contingencies in the amount not to exceed 10% of the bid amount.
We have a second. Commissioner Frazier.
Second.
Comments, any, or Mr. Commissioner Schlegel?
I, I do, actually. This is something that I've been contacted on repeatedly on the last, since I've been lucky enough to serve. The, especially the Band Shell Parking Area, I'm really, really excited to see that get taken care of, being a big fan of the island out there. Few times a week, I'll drive through, and it's amazing how quickly that gets beat up. So I think that this is a great victory for the, for the people that utilize the Band Shell area and the playground and that, so it's, it's quite overdue as far as I'm concerned, and I'm excited to see it taken care of.
Thank you.
Along with the other asbestos.
Mr. Frazier, anything?
I agree, Commissioner Schlegel. Back in our PAC days, Prescott Board of Riser days, it was very common to hear comments about that, and lately, the city commissioner comments about all the time, both via email and on public. It's a wonderful park, it's the heart of the city, but it's been rapidly deteriorating. Have you looked at, you know, replacing a different gravel? Even asked different people that are knowledgeable, can we put different gravel, it won't wear out as fast? And they said, there's possibilities, but there's no benefits, so it's great, they're taking care of it and making everything right, and it'd be just great to, not have just to deteriorate over time. So it's just great for everybody, and the improvements to the lighthouse part of our area is be great, because you know, multi- use pathway, which is great for everybody, and benefits to move things around and get things better. I think it's great for everybody.
Thank you. Any others? I see this is three good projects that'll definitely improve the city, so I'm anxious to see this get started. See no further comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries seven zero. Next business item, application for waiver and plan. MERS Defined Benefit Pension Plan. City clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, sir. Based upon the city's filing of Form 5572 and pursuant to PA 202 of 2017, the state has ruled that our MERS Defined Benefit Plan is underfunded. In accordance with the act, the city may apply for a waiver of unfunded status for each system, pension, or retiree health insurance within 45 days from the date we receive notification of the unfunded status, June 28, 2018. The steps the city has already taken to address the funding status are documented in the attached application. In addition to the application itself, the city must receive city commission approval to submit the waiver application. If the waiver application is approved by the state, the city will not have to file corrective action plan with municipal stability board. The city's application for waiver and plan is attached. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation, approve the attached application for waiver and plan for the MERS Defined Benefit Pension Plan and authorize the city manager to sign and return the application. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Could I call in our chief financial officer, Gary Simpson, to simplify this for us, please?
No, you can't, so, thank you. Yeah. Really not much else to say. This is something we've been talking about for a while now, but last year, the state did pass Public Act 202, which required all municipalities who have a retirement system and those that have retiree health, which is quite basically, pretty much all municipalities in the state, to do some additional financial reporting. And there were certain trigger points they were looking at, and if you did not pass one of the trigger points, then they require you to go through additional steps. We did trip triggers on our MERS plan and on our retiree health plan, which really weren't that unexpected. So what we're doing tonight is requesting you approve that we file the waiver application, which will be submitted to the Department of Treasury, and if they approve it, then we'll be good to go for another year. If they don't approve it, then we'll have to go through some additional steps, basically to assure them we're doing what we can to address our underfunded liabilities. And what I just said applies to the next item as well, so you don't have to call me up for that.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we approve the attached application for waiver and plan for MERS Defined Pension Plan and authorize the city manager to sign and return the application.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any comments? Commissioner Reynolds?
No.
Commissioner Frazier?
This makes Gary's life easier, I'm all for it.
Mr. Plard?
Thank you, your honor. Just to say that state retirement requirements are changing, they changed, they change year after year after year, and I just want to make it known publicly that the state, or the city's retirement plan is in excellent condition, really. This is, this is some paperwork to help out, as has been stated, to help out the finance department.
Thank you. That's not like we're doing anything wrong, it's just the state throwing more rules in the game, which they're good at doing. Any more comments? See none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carries seven zero. Next item, application for waiver and plan of the retiree health insurance. City clerk, please.
Thank you, mayor. Background. Based upon the city's filing of Form 5572 and pursuant to PA 202 of 2017, the state has ruled that our other post-employment benefits, OPEB, plan is underfunded. OPEB refers to the city's retiree health insurance liabilities. In accordance with the act, the city may apply for a waiver of underfunded status for each system, pension, or retiree health insurance within 45 days from the date we receive notification of the unfunded status, June 28, 2018. The steps the city has already taken to address the funding status are documented in the attached application. In the past, the city has used a pay-as-you-go funding system. In anticipation of the new requirements from the state, the city established two retiree health funding vehicles, Section 115 Governmental Integral Heart Trust, back in April and May of 2018, to begin pre-funding this liability. In addition to the application itself, the city must receive city commission approval to submit the waiver application. If the waiver application is approved by the state, the city will not have to file corrective plan, action plan with municipal stability board. The city's application for waiver and plan is attached. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation, approve the attached application for waiver and plan for the city of Marquette OPEB liabilities and authorize the city manager to sign and return the application. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion. I see a motion. Mr. Smith?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached application for waiver and plan for the city of Marquette OPEB liabilities and authorize the city manager to sign and return the application.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Plard?
I'll second.
Any comments? Commissioner Smith, any?
No comment.
Commissioner Plard? Anybody else? Pretty straightforward? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries seven zero. Last item of the evening under new business would be the audit contract for fiscal years 2018 through 2020. City clerk, again, would you give us the background on that?
Thank you, mayor. Background. The contract for the city's required annual audit is due for renewal, with Anderson, Tacman and Company PLC being the only local CPA firm able to conduct the city's audit, and because this is a professional service that does not require a formal request for proposal, city staff has negotiated terms for a three-year contract. The increases from the prior years are due to additional work related to new governmental accounting standards and new activities of the city and its component units. The city's chief financial officer and the treasurer have concluded that negotiated costs to be appropriated and in line with previous years and inclusion in the extra services required. Fiscal effect, the contract amounts of $46,050 for fiscal year 2018, $45,400 for fiscal year 2019, and $48,800 for fiscal year 2020 will be included in the respective budgets. Recommendation, approve a three-year contract for annual audit services with Anderson, Tacman and Company PLC in the amounts of $46,050 for fiscal year 2018, $45,400 for fiscal year 2019, and $48,800 for fiscal year 2020, and authorize the chief financial officer to sign the contract. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, I motion to approve a three-year contract for annual audit services with Anderson, Tacman, and Company PLC in the amounts of $46,050 for FY 2018, $45,400 for FY 2019, and $48,800 for FY 2020, and authorize the chief financial officer to sign the contract.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Comments? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I, I think that I would call, call on our chief financial officer to explain the value of going with this particular contract.
At least I'm getting my exercise. So anyway, in years past, we've, we have gone out to a full RFP on this, and it's always been pretty much the same result. So we're just trying to save some staff time, like I said, stated in the supplement, Anderson, Tacman is the only local firm that can handle an audit of our size and complexity. There are other firms downstate that can, but what we have found, they just can't compete price-wise. We do get a, it is a bargain for what we have, the prices we have agreed, agreed to. It is quite a good deal for the city, so there's no complaints there. We're quite happy with the services they provide the city, and we don't think we could do any better by going with another firm. So basically, that's why we skipped the RFP process this year.
Is there a value that you see in using a local firm that knows the city as opposed to one perhaps that might be coming from downstate that does not?
Yeah, it's always, with any kind of service, you kind of want to use the local people because they know the city, and like I said, we do have a very complex audit, and you don't really know that until you've actually done it, because we did in a previous... Because we did in a previous RFP, we did have a firm out of Grand Rapids, which really was half the price of what everybody else was bidding, but in talking to them, they just had no idea what we were doing. So you have to really know Marquette, to know what we're doing, to know what the work entails. And so in this case, I am a strong believer in going with a local firm. If it's your desire, we can do an RFP, but I just don't think we would see any additional benefit by doing that and, and trying to save staff time, because I don't want to go into details, but my staff is under a lot of stress with other issues. I thought this was one way we might could eliminate some of that stress.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier, anything?
I think it's great you're using a local company and you're, their city financial officer is used to them, he knows how it works. They know how it works, everything goes good, and I think it's great.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. So the reason I pulled this from the consent agenda is it's just one of those things, an audit that you don't bid out. I don't think there's any issues going on. I know Anderson, Tacman does a lot of good work for us, but it's just one of those things that gives me pause to go, okay, why aren't we bidding this out? An audit's a pretty important thing. I don't know. I'm struggling with this one. I don't know that I'll vote yes on it, because I just feel like three years is a long time to not give someone else an opportunity. And everyone else is just, it's run in the mill, but to me, this is one of the things that's a checks and balance that we do as city commissioners, so just want to make sure that we are thinking about all aspects. Not saying there's any issues. Thank you.
Comments? Anybody else? Mr. Schlegel?
I totally respect that, and I think one of the things, Gary, you might want to expand on is how they looked ahead and said, you know, here's what we see as far as some of the changes that we're going to have to encounter, and that's why you see that slight fluctuation in there, so that they are, they've already, they know what's coming down the pipe as far as adding more or taking away or leaving it the same amount of work as far as the audit goes. And I think that's pretty noble of them to be able to sit there and say that, you know, it's a very small fluctuation at the same time, as far as I'm concerned. But that was just something that, I don't know if you want to expand on it, if there's a need to, but something that I found in the, in the agenda briefing comforting, so.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed?
No.
That passes six one. Next we come to the second public comment of the evening, again, a time when residents can address the commission. I'm an open public comment. We need you up front with your name, and you get three minutes. Would anyone care to address the commission at this time?
James Gallen, 538 Yama Road, the Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And I would ask you to please consider, you, it seems like you came, I didn't hear nothing about this charter review that you were looking, even looking into that and putting it on the ballot now, when, could you please consider having a public, a public hearing? And maybe the city and the people have some concerns and would like to address other issues while you're already there, you're getting with the charter, you could say charter amendment, we've got a couple of different ones. And are people satisfied in what has happened to the charter? And so if you could get some public input on it, that'd be great. And I want to thank you for your concern about the adherence to the rules of procedure. That was very refreshing, you know, although confusing, but very refreshing. And in defense of member Smith, the, there is a misprint on the agenda, and it doesn't show a, an action item for the public hearing, it doesn't show it. So she was correct, absolutely correct. And it reminds me of the debates we had here with Mayor Keevila, when he was adamantly protecting the status quo of having discussion and debate before a motion. That's wrong, that's against the rules. You're not supposed to have any discussion or debate before a motion who has been properly seconded. And eventually, he had figured out, I'm assuming with the counsel of the city attorney and the, I'll have to go back to the meetings, but he began suspending the rules when that happened, so that the community would at least know that, what the real rules are. You suspend the rule, you say, hey, you know what, we're going to deviate a little bit. Because a lot of that is, and I think that John Keevila was, had in his life was the pressures of the bullying, and that's a part of what the children are going through these days. That's what a lot of youth suicide is coming from, is the bullying. And that is when a person has the authority over the situation, and they just aren't following the laws and rules, guidelines. And they just bully everybody, and they bully them into it. And a lot of times, people that get bullied, they don't even think they are getting bullied, because it's just been accepted over time. It's just been accepted over time, we're just going to do whatever that guy says, for whatever reason, and these groups of people. And John Keevila had the, one of the highest levels of the risk for suicide, which is being a bully victim. That's when, part of the time you're being bullied by people, and the other part of the time you're bullying other people. And I have been bullied here, on the record, and it's, it's at the People's Library, the videos. And, but they finally, he finally surrendered and said, you know what, that is a violation of rules, so we're going to correct it. So I would ask you to please consider getting personally involved in this suicide prevention effort in this community. And you start out with a report by your chief of police, who has been involved with the Suicide Prevention Alliance, which is run by the Health Department, under resolution of the county board, they're designing and implementing a suicide prevention plan, see where we're at on that. Can't find anything, nobody, nobody knows. And they all refer back to the Sarah Derwin at the Health Department, she doesn't know either. She just kind of assures it, oh yeah, stuff's happening, stuff's happening. There's no reports, there's no efforts, and see where we're at on all that, so that we can start preventing some suicides in this community.
Frank Cheverito, these are my opinions. July 9th, this board put the cart before the horse again by okaying downtown property for development while ignoring the parking demand, as if twelve added spaces would fulfill the needs of a five-story building that should be eight stories, so long as we resolve the parking first. Our two new members aren't aware of my sixteen-year effort to save our bluffs, not as frequently lately, because after years of ignorance by this board, other important matters needed covering. At one point, a slopes consultant was flown from downstate at a cost of $4,000 to speak during one of the more packed agendas we've ever seen. He was rushed. Even though the expert agreed with everything I'd said, he was largely ignored, and there was no follow-up, presumably because this board didn't want to restrict preferred families from doing as they pleased. This mentality has now resulted in the worst destruction that's befallen our lower harbor bluff since the birdhouses. Winona, Minnesota instituted critical slopes ordinances prior to 1992, after two selfish families built atop the majestic bluffs. Anyone with a brain could see the obvious need. How is it that after sixteen years of constant reminders, until several years ago, this board put nothing on the books except for an agenda item that remains unfinished business year after year to this day? Winona learned from its mistakes soon enough to save most of its bluffs, while this board promotes the very mentality that's obliterating Marquette's natural nooks and crannies. They're twenty-six years ahead of us and counting. Lighthouse Park took nine years for us to kind of open. You also wasted years to even start saving Shira's Park, as it eroded into Lake Superior. Around select holidays, there's illegal detonation of bombs with no regard for people's levels of toxicity, the size of the bombs, the proximity to other properties, the dryness of conditions, or wind direction and intensity. This mentality goes hand in hand with the demise of our slopes and green space. Most of the ground on that ruined bluff is bare dirt, primed for erosion, which this board loves to ignore time and time again. So much for the gray fox, not that many in this bunch would give a rip. Maybe Ms. Smith cares. Mr. Schlegel served on the planning board, and though I don't know the current board, it's historically been an example of how not to conduct land use. They're free to speak up, if not, they're in bed with the rest. No one except me tells his foes how to make a liar of him. July 9th, an updated rendering was shown of how the North End founders may appear one day. There's still a chance to provide some of the promised transition from lake to downtown, so long as the retail covers the ground floors and all future buildings. And this business being a liar, being made a liar of can be great, if only once in twenty years. But twenty years and still no slopes ordinances, thanks to members like Mr. Stonehouse and Campana, who take pride in ignoring their critics and working on unrelated matter during comment, public comment.
Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in the city of Marquette. First and foremost, good luck to all candidates on the August primary ballot, both city, or all city, state, and local, or federal, please. Same time, I'm here to address what I tried to address earlier, the purchase of parcel thirty-five. I'm really, I'm kind of, I'm flabbergasted that, A, every one of you say you listen to the people, B, there were seventy-five people here a month ago, and C, you told every single one of them tonight, their opinion didn't matter. In fact, Mr. Plard, you actually said you got emails from people from out of town saying they want to ride the trails, and you still voted to make them, develop them. I'm not saying we couldn't make the money, but I'm saying you sold parcel thirty-five for less than the cost of a three-bedroom home in the city of Marquette. You immediately took that off of any, any recreational view. And here's my question to you, you also say that you want us to join the committees and the boards. I didn't hear word from Parks and Rec Committee. What do they say? How do they have a plan if they could make money for the city of Marquette? It's only $150,000. And I'm sorry, but that's not a lot of money to say to every single person that was in here, and every single person that sent an email, you're right, that is worthwhile of keeping. We do not have to sell it. But you sold it, you sold it to a person with, and I'm sorry, I went, I went back and tried viewing it online, I didn't notice if Kern and Company actually gave you a presentation. So I'm sorry if they did, and I, and I say this out of turn, but you sold something to somebody without a presentation. That, that seems like your responsibility to us as citizens is this is the time that you can respond and you can reply. This is the ability to be, to respond. And what you said to every single person who's going to ride in the Orteshore Bike Race, that for the last ten years, all of this volunteer effort was for naught. Because I can't tell you how many times I walked down to that Rippling River Resort looking for thimbleberries or going fishing on the river, and I'm kind of scared to walk up the trail and go into the parking lot, it's private property. So how far off the trail, if we are talking about conserving it, how far off the trail is private property? Can I go pick thimbleberries along that trail now? Can, can we utilize it in such a way that kids who are riding Grom don't have to worry about when mom and dad are coming back from, it's called the A-line now, but I read Yo Mama, or I rode Yo Mama last night, and I highly recommend, if you don't know what I'm talking about when I say that, you sold us out. Goodbye.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ryan Miller, 712 Chapewa Square. I want to revisit the fluoride in the water issue. Last time I spoke, I said I'd found twenty-six studies in seven different countries that showed a decreased IQ. Some of those, a fair numbers of those studies, have safe, quote, "safe" levels of fluoride in the water. I went back, I did more research. I now found fifty-two studies. I don't think fifty-two studies are all wrong, all bad science. So in terms of the safety of fluoride in the water, I have questions about how safe it is. Moving on, I've read in the media, there's an issue with lead in the water in certain schools, NMU, certain places. What we put in the water is hydrofluoric acid. There are papers showing the effects of leaching of that hydrofluoric acid, of lead, out of plumbing fixtures. Okay? So if we don't think that fluoride in the water is bad, I hope we know that lead in the water is bad. Cardiovascular problems, hypertension, antisocial behavior, there's a whole range of things. So just as a possible experiment, if for one month, there were no fluoride put in the water, I don't think we would see cavities popping out with wild abandon, and see if there would be a change, because there was a statement in Irish Medical Times. Here's the quote. "It's noteworthy that a number of peer-reviewed journals have published studies that found higher blood levels in children residing in communities with artificial water fluoridation. Moreover, in 2007, researchers published findings in the Journal of Neurotoxicity, which found that treating water with hexafluoric acid combined with chlorine, which we have in our water also, used to disinfect water supplies, resulted in increased leaching of lead from plumbing devices over time." There's a multiplier effect with the two of them, it's even worse. And then he says, "I'm sure medical practitioners would be interested to know that in two U.S. cities, Tacoma, Washington, and Thurmont, Maryland, an immediate reduction in the concentration of lead in drinking water supplies was observed when water fluoridation ceased." That's pretty interesting. So in terms of, if we didn't put fluoride in the water for a month, we'd save a little bit of money, I don't think we'd see a public health outbreak, and you could monitor the lead levels, and if we're going to spend a lot of money on changing certain aspects of the infrastructure, like in the schools, I think it'd be a valid test to do beforehand, just to see what the result would be. Wouldn't cause any harm, wouldn't cost any money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We will go to comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Smith.
I have none, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
I'll try and keep it short and sweet. As far as the fluoride thing, I'd say make a point with our director of water, he'd be the person to talk to about that. He'll make a point, talk to the city manager, he'll get you to the right person to talk to about that, he'll explain all about the fluoride for you.
I talked to them already.
Talk to, talk to, talk to the city manager, he'll, he'll tell you who to talk to, you talk about that. That's the best thing to talk to about that, for the fluoride, because I've heard multiple things about that, I've heard doctors say yes, doctors say no, I've heard multiple reports, so I don't want to get into it, it'd take too long, we'd be here all night to get into it, but talk to, talk to the city manager, and he'll tell you who to talk to about that, it'd be a great thing to talk to. As far as Ridge Street, it's been there for a long time, and Mr. Verto, if you didn't want to live, if you're concerned about the slope of Ridge Street, you're not from the area, as I understand, so why did you decide to move to an apartment on a house that was built on Ridge Street? If you're concerned about the houses being built on Ridge Street, considering the bluff, why did you move into an apartment on Ridge Street, a house that was built on Ridge Street years ago that overlooks the bluff? If you're concerned about the house on Ridge Street, then why would you move into that place? So would you say, hey, I know the birdhouses get built, they put a retaining wall behind the birdhouses to protect the slope, same thing in my house, just things to do. And one of our founders back in the day lived on Ridge Street, back in the day, Peter White. So if there's anything to do with building Ridge Street, it's back in the day, before our time. And as far as erosion of the lake, it's not the city's fault. The lake has been way up. It was down, way down for many years, there's hardly any erosion. The lake level's down, and now it's way up. The area, the engineering company's looking at going through, went through by boat, there's only, there's three feet of water now, it's supposed to be a sandbar, there's three feet of water over it now. The lake's way up, that's the problem with that. And as far as Lighthouse Park, it's taken a while because it has to do with the government. Like, when the city wants to do something, it takes a long time because of government. When we want to get something to do with the government, it takes a long time. Wasn't our fault, the Coast Guard dragged their feet because it's a government organization, so, long story short, it's not our fault. You had a problem with it, call Trump.
Thank you.
I just want to say how much I enjoyed doing the muscular dystrophy boot fundraiser, boot drive with the fire department this past weekend. Did it Friday for four hours, and it was amazing, the public outcry for help, help, they just gave and gave and gave, and I had to empty that boot several times, and I just loved to see the community come together like that, it was really special. So I'd like to thank the fire department for doing that, and I think you'll probably touch on that in your spiel there, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to just say that the, all the guys that were part of it were proud to be doing it, they're in the top three or four or five, definitely in the top five in the state of all departments that do it for fundraising, it's awesome. It was a great time, and I was glad to be a part of it. During that, I got to meet these, this couple that pulled up in their travel van, and I said, you know, where are you from? And they said, out west. We had a couple of seconds, because no cars were coming, and they had... We had a couple of seconds because no cars were coming, and they had Adventure Blogger written on the side of it. And they were in town for a couple of days, and I said, you know, we're from out west, but we've been in our car for the last three years, and that's how they're making their money. And they said they're here to, to try out the bike trails, and they said how much they enjoyed them, and that they were heading up to the Key One O the next day. It was pretty cool to be able to, to have a couple of seconds to talk with them. I said, thanks for visiting, thanks for saying good things, and I'm sure you're going to have a lot of great things to say about our community once you're, once you're gone. So, super cool that I was able to meet those guys, and they threw a few bucks in the, in the boot as well, so. That's the kind of stuff that we're up against, this is what the NTN is talking about when they say that they bring people in, we all know it, we've seen it. I'm excited to see, as I stated before, everything that's going along with this property development and the relationship between all of the entities, it is a special thing that we're a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things. What a great weekend. I mean, between Blueberry Fest on Friday downtown, and the Little Sprinkles didn't keep any crowds away, the wonderful Art on the Rocks downtown in Madison Park, and certainly the Outback too, just, just fantastic, and to wander around and talk with people from somewhere else. If you were in Maine, you would say they were from away, but they were here in Marquette, and for a variety of reasons, everything from riding the trails to just enjoying the environment, enjoying the, the ambiance of the city. I would ask folks to remember that this coming Saturday, August 4th, is Coast Guard Day. It marks the Coast Guard's 228th anniversary, so if you see a coastie, say congratulations. We really accomplished some good things tonight, and on a lot of different planes. Putting the, the resolution out for sale of 35 was one of them, again, because it demonstrated the ability of divergent groups to work together for a common cause, for common good. And while that trail has, has certainly a ways yet to go, what a, what a remarkable step that was, selling also the same resolution for nine through 12, presenting the real opportunity for some good and solid economic development in the city, important to us all. And finally, the charter review. When you change a charter, that's big time stuff, because that's what governs this city, that is our constitution. And what we're putting out to the public is to change the charter in terms of how we receive the financial payment, the pill payment, if you will, from the Board of Light and Power. That is hugely important to everybody in this city, that is hugely important to the economic viability of the city. And to be able to do that is remarkable, and to be able to do it with, with both city and BLP coming together and saying, this is a good thing, this is the best way we should proceed, is even more remarkable, and again, more reflective of how the city works together. So.
Nothing further, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Plord?
I want to kind of piggyback on Mayor Protem Stonehouse's comments about the weekend. The weekend was fantastic, I was at the Blueberry Festival, it was a lot of fun. I want to thank the bands that were there, the artists that were there, it was just a really great organized, organized festival for downtown Marquette. Also want to remind folks that on Tuesday, August 7th, is the primary, please go out and vote, please do your homework, and if you like what I do in the city commission, I am running for reelection, I am asking for your vote, please vote for me on Wednesday, August 7th, and, but again, whatever, whoever you vote for or don't vote for, please go out and vote, it's so very important. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I think most of the other commissioners mentioned the things I had written down, but they all, I was hoping I was first, because I did have a question, I thought Fred or you could clarify. I've had somebody, a couple people ask me in the last coming weeks, the status of the code that you guys are both on the committee, redoing the property, land zoning, and I know both of, yes. So I was hoping one of you could just tell me how far out we're looking. It's the people interested in these.
Working the land development code and sitting on that committee is like watching paint dry. And it dries very slowly and streaky, so it is certainly a work in progress, and I would guess that it will probably be at least six, seven, eight, maybe nine months before it finally begins to work its way out. The, the recommendations initially come to the Land Development Code Ad Hoc Committee, we go through them, then it goes to Planning Commission, they chew through them further, and then finally, that comes back again to the ad hoc committee, take another look at. So it's just a long process, lots of opportunity for public input to it, and basically, that public input is best done at the planning commission, commission level, because they're the ones that are really matiating the detail of the code. Thank you for the opportunity.
Tonight, I feel very good about the sale of parcels nine, 10, 11, 12, and 35. I thought that was a win-win for all the groups involved. I, I don't think there could have been a better outcome for what we accomplished tonight. Everybody kind of got what they wanted, and I think going forward, it's going to be beneficial for everyone. Keep in mind, there's not a lot of money, but whatever money we get is going to go strictly towards reducing the bond debt on Hartwood property, so it's all a good thing. In regards to the charter amendment, I would encourage people, please vote yes on that. Please, we do want to change the wording on it so that the city does collect a 5.5% of total revenues. It'll, it'll benefit the city, it'll just be a lot easier. Do not forget the tire collection, which again occurs August 1st, from 3:00 to 7:00 at the Pioneer McClellan drop-off site. And in regards to fluoride, because I, I really feel strongly, we have a very good water department, and I, I believe what they do is correct, and I want the residents to understand, our water is very safe. The fluoride that is in the Marquette water, it's regulated, it's monitored, safe, always has been. There have been thousands and thousands of verified scientific studies by all kinds of different groups. It's been proven fluoride in water does not cause cancer, low IQ, lead absorption, neurotoxicity, or osteoporosis. Very simple way to figure this out, if you have doubts, call the county health department, talk to them. Even easier, talk to your dentist. When 99% of the dentists everywhere are in favor of fluoride, where do you think they got their opinion? So again, the fluoride in the Marquette water is safe, do not be alarmed. City manager?
I don't know if there's anything more to say after that. Just a couple of quick notes. If you're wondering about line painting, we're, we're getting up to speed. I apologize for the delay, but we've had a few setbacks over the course of the last few weeks, and you've probably noticed that some of our lanes are being completed as well as our crosswalks, so we hope to be going full strength here pretty quick with the intention of being at this stage, hopefully in May of next year, not waiting until August. I was questioned earlier about what the city might be doing regarding lead in our system and systems, and just to, just to make a quick comment, we do random testing within the city every three years as a DEQ requirement, and this was done last summer, and all of our tests came back good or okay. Kurt Goodman will be spending some time researching some of the city facilities as to how we can look into testing them and making sure that they're good for the public as well. As of this time, I don't have any concerns, there's no obvious concerns that I'm aware of, but I think on the erring towards caution, I think, you know, we'll take a look at that in the next few weeks, so that's all I have.